I'd like to leave this student letter in the name of Justice Barrett and to the Oklahoma District Attorney, one motion under oath indivisible with the privilege of sentencing.
Moment of silence invocation. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Markovich.
Here. Let the record show nine here, zero absent. Reading in a minutes, Councilman Spatelli.
Make a motion to accept a minutes from May 28, 2019, be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson. Let the minutes be placed on file. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. Prue of claims, Councilman Warple.
Make a motion that we approve the claims, beginning with claims dated 5/29/19 and ending with claims dated 6/5/19. Claim thirty, fifty-one through thirty-two, eighty-eight inclusive, in the total amount of three million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakos, that the claims be approved as read. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify. Oh, roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, nine in favor, zero absent. Public hearings, we have one public hearing.
Item A, ordinance sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and the petitioner was Clara Cosivar. An ordinance vacating a nine-foot portion north of Rose Lawn, lying between sixty-nine, forty-one State Line Avenue and fifteen Rose Lawn Street, City of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone wish to speak in favor of or against a public hearing nineteen dash fourteen? Anyone wish to speak in favor of or against nineteen dash fourteen? Anyone wish to speak of or in favor of nineteen dash fourteen? Public hearing is closed. Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Counsel as a whole will be bringing out nineteen twelve and nineteen fourteen.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, at this time I would like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings coming up on Wednesday, June 12th, beginning at 2:00 PM. Community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza. Tuesday, June 18th, 6:30 PM, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center. On Thursday, June 20th, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at 7:00 PM at the Jean Shepherd Center. And on Thursday, June 13th, beginning at 6:30 PM, the Whiting Roberts Dale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College. As I say every week, this is an excellent opportunity for you to come out and hear what's going on in your neighborhood. You don't have to live in that area to attend the crime watch. Any of the community policing officers who are there will be able to address any issues that one might have from areas throughout the city. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Next item on the agenda is ordinance for third and final passage.
Ordinance nineteen twelve, sponsored by Councilman Warple and Rakos. An ordinance to amend ordinance seventy-two, forty-six, also known as section thirty-seven point zero eight six of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to travel.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of nineteen twelve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of nineteen twelve. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
No.
Torres.
No.
Higgs.
No.
Emerson.
No.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
No.
Ordinance fails, five in favor, four against. I'm sorry, five against and four in favor. Motion is defeated. Next item.
Ordinance nineteen fourteen, sponsored by Councilman Emerson. An ordinance vacating a nine-foot portion north of Rose Lawn Street, lying between sixty-nine, forty-one State Line Avenue and fifteen Rose Lawn Street, the City of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
As I spoke in caucus, and will repeat here, this is a, it's a half-circled, it's times like this I wish we had a, not a jumbo trial, but a screen where you could see the handouts, but it's a half-circle.
Please to motion, please to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by.
Hasn't made a motion. Point of order.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Kowinski. Motion for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash fourteen. Thank you, City Clerk. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson.
At any rate, it's at, it's on Rose Lawn, but it also intersects with State Line a little bit, on a corner house that faces State Line. But it's a half-circle, as best I can describe it, off the alley, and it was originally designed to be a cul-de-sac, and the owners, and owners actually, would like it along the lot line that currently exists. Right now it indents on the back of the lot on Rose Lawn, I believe it's fifteen Rose Lawn, but it affects fifteen Rose Lawn and sixty-nine, forty-one State Line. So, this is what they designed it for years ago, and it's no longer in effect because there's no plans to do a cul-de-sac. I suspect it had something to do with State Line and the, perhaps the garbage trucks wanting to make a turn there, but they can utilize State Line now and go back up north, or, it has to be north, it's a one-way. So, I so move.
Second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Just a question whether any neighbors opposed this ordinance, or whether any utilities did. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I spoke to two of the neighbors, and they are actually happy about it because it affects, two of them it affects their particular lot and the actual owner of, to be referred to as the big house, because it's bigger than the other two. They're very happy about it because it does affect, their lot line currently ends at the back of their garage, and this will enable them to have a nine-foot extension due to the previously designed cul-de-sac.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes, nine in favor, zero absent.
President Markovich, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Introduction of ordinances, we have none. Resolutions, we have none. Noon unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
First Financial Bank, located at twenty-seven oh-five one-hundred-sixty-ninth Street, is giving out counterfeit a hundred-dollar bills to its customers. At least, they gave one to me. On May seventeen, I went to First National Bank at twenty-seven oh-five one-hundred-sixty-ninth Street, Hammond, and withdrew nine hundred dollars from my checking account. They gave me eight one-hundred-dollar bills and two twenty-dollar bills, one-ten and one-fifty. They put it in their bank marked envelope. In the car, I took out two twenties and one-ten, which, fifty dollars, left eight-fifty of it in the envelope and sealed it. The next day, I gave the sealed envelope to Mr. Torres, my landlord, no relation. Without opening the envelope, he gave it to his wife. On June second, about seventeen days later, a Saturday, she took the envelope to her bank, Chase, for deposit. That is when Chase Bank determined that one of the hundred-dollar bills was counterfeit. They took a report from the landlord, confiscated the bill. The landlord later called me and told me what had happened. It was over twelve PM on a Saturday, so I told her I would talk to the First Financial Bank on Monday, since the bank was closed for the weekend. On Monday, early morning, I went to First National Bank and told them that their bank had given me a counterfeit a hundred-dollar bill on May seventeen. The blank, bank clerk told me there was nothing they could do since three weeks had elapsed. I asked to speak to the bank manager, and she repeated the same thing as the clerk. There had been too much time and too many transactions. I explained to her that there had only been two transactions from me to the landlord, and that the money never left the envelope until it got to Chase Bank. The manager stuck to her story, to her position, and basically told me it was my problem. You know, as a former police officer, I know that counterfeit money way back then, and I'm sure it's still now a big problem in this country. There are hundreds of counterfeit bills floating across the country daily. I took several counterfeit reports during my career. There are people who have mastered the method of counterfeiting. Some get caught, others don't. There are nations, like North Korea and Russia and drug cartels, who have sophisticated machines and skilled counterfeit artists to duplicate dollar bills. They know how to put in the slivers, hidden lines, proper coloring, hidden faces and other marks that the US Treasury does to distinguish currency from manufactured bills. The special paper that is used to make dollar bills is also copied. About twenty years ago, I learned this from a US Treasury agent that of course worked for the US Treasury at the time. First Financial Bank at twenty-seven oh-five one-hundred-sixty-ninth Street told me that they have electronic equipment to detect counterfeit money. Guess what? So do some of the bad guys. That's how they test the counterfeit bills to make sure they are ready for circulation. Banks should be just as accountable as the common citizen when bad bills fall into their hands. You know, I value a hundred dollars, just like First Financial Bank does. But they have billions, I have very few. We reimburse my landlords since they are not responsible for what happened. They are respectable people, and I do not doubt what they said. One of the excuses First Financial used was that it probably had been mixed with other money. The landlords definitely told me that they never took the money out of the envelope until they reached Chase Bank. I have been a customer of First Financial Bank for over twenty years, and they have made more than a hundred dollars from me. If you ever go to First Financial Bank, be sure to take counterfeiting testing equipment with you to check out the bills they give you. First Financial of twenty-seven oh-five one-hundred-sixty-nine was very callous and caring with their explanation. Their attitude was, tough luck, old man, it's your problem, not ours. I am sure there are other banks in Hammond who appreciate their longtime customers. First Financial Bank, twenty-seven oh-five one-hundred-sixty-ninth Street, Hammond, is not one of them. They will give you counterfeit money and then deny it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman, I commend you for bringing that out here.
Yeah.
And seeing how you brought that out here, I mean, I don't know if the chair would entertain a motion to send a letter to First Financial Bank if they found any other counterfeit money during that time. You want to make that motion, have a letter sent to them?
Well, Mr. President, I asked them that, and they said no. I was the only one that complained. But I am two-hundred percent sure, if not two-thousand, that that money came from their bank. Otherwise, I wouldn't be making a big fuss out of it. And it's not the hundred dollars, it's just their attitude that they don't care. A nice hole in mine would pursue it, and they just said, that's fine. But, they just don't care. So, yes, I make a motion to send a letter. I don't know who the big wig is over there, but to First Financial Bank and explain the situation.
Second. Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Emerson, to send a letter to First Financial Bank, twenty-seven oh-five one-hundred-sixty-ninth Street. I would request that Councilman that you would write up that letter, how you want it stated and so forth, and then, you know, get it approved, and then have it mailed out. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, Councilman, was that, that happened to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I don't have a problem with airing the, what the councilman said. I guess my question would be, is if a resident came up to us and spoke in front of us and said they wanted our help in sending a letter, what would our answer be? I don't know about everybody else on this, but I'm just a guy that happens to sit in this chair and be on the council. Being a councilman doesn't make me special and give me the right to say, well, how dare you do that to a councilman? So, for those reasons, I'll be voting no on this letter.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
And that was kind of my thinking. Councilman Torres, I understand the frustration, a hundred dollars is an awful lot of money. But rather than a letter coming from us as a body, I think that it should come from perhaps the law department, perhaps our, is somebody with a legal background, because I certainly wouldn't want to say something that could get us into trouble.
That's a good point. We do have our own counsel attorney. Pete wants to go ahead and work with him, but I can commend Councilman Torres coming out and openly saying that, I mean, because I don't think he's asking for any special thing, but if that happened to somebody else out there, you know, I mean, they want to come before the council and say what happened to them?
Point of order.
Point of order.
State your point of order.
Yes, if you'd like to engage in the discussion, I think you should relinquish the chair.
Oh, my God.
I'm not really getting into debate, I'm just trying to guide everybody. I'm not debating anything, I'm just trying to guide and looking for guidance.
Your call, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
You know, if I was to walk in there and give them a hundred-dollar bill, and they caught it through their screening equipment, yeah, they would definitely call the police and make a report, or, I just want them to be accountable as a bank and not just guff the whole thing out like it's no big thing. Perhaps, my understanding counterfeit bills is, some of them are definitely good enough to pass their screening, and it may be them being a lesser bank than Chase financially, Chase has probably got the better equipment, so their equipment might not have been working at the time, or whoever was checking the equipment wasn't looking at it. So, that's my own thing. I'm not too concerned about losing a hundred dollars, that's not gonna break me or cost me to go to homeless shelter or something. But I just like their attitude.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess perception is everything, and in this instance, I guess Councilman Torres is just simply trying to acknowledge the fact that he didn't feel as though he was actually.
Poor customer service.
Poor customer service, or the relationship between the teller and him was not the greatest. But sometime perception can be misconstrued, and I know certainly as sitting on this council, I've experienced it on a number of occasions, and accusations and comments have been made about me that are not true. So, I wasn't there, I don't know what happened. All I can say, if he feels that's gonna resolve the issue, why not send a letter to the president of the bank and just address your concerns as the customer service as it relates to that, and if you want to sit down with the president of the bank, do so as well.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Who spoke up?
I did.
Councilman Warple.
This is the exact reason I've said for the last two years, we should not be voting on letters. If you want to send a letter, send a letter. But now we have a motion in front of us that basically says, we as an entire council, that, I'm not, I believe every word that my colleague said just now about what happened. But we're sending a letter that we as an entire council are making an accusation against a business that does business in our city. And I've said it for over a year or two now, is why we make motions to send letters and we vote on it, I don't get it. But no, I don't want to be part of a letter that accuses a bank of ripping off a customer. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Councilman Warple, you're entitled to your own opinion, and certainly if that's how you feel, you can not say yes to the letter, but I think what Councilman Torres is trying to convey to the bank is that there was not being professional in terms of addressing his concern as it relates to the counterfeit bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Councilman Torres was very eloquent in his description of customer service and what he felt about it. He was also very clear about being cautious about counterfeit monies. I believe that he has served the purpose that he brought it out to have served. And I believe that that's as far as we need to go with this. I don't think a letter from us serves any particular business regarding the council or city matters, but I do believe that airing it out the way Councilman Torres did was in fact maybe the best way to go about this, and let the public know about the scams that continue to go on in this city and others, as well as how the customer service was portrayed by how he felt about it. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I don't have a dog in this fight, but I mean, even in saying that, I mean, how do you resolve the issue as it relates to the customer service issue?
I can, you know, commend Councilman Torres. I mean, I know I saw, you know, you take your coins left over from, you know, your coffee pot, you take it to the bank, and they throw it at a machine, and you know, count the coins and all that, and I know some people that would go ahead and roll them up and already know advance, and then they take it out of the.
Point of order, are you supposed to be speaking?
I'm just giving up information.
From the chair?
You want to take the chair?
I'm asking you if you're supposed to be speaking from the chair. You've been on this council for thirty-two years.
Councilman Rakos, you want to take the chair?
No.
Allow me to talk?
I guess we just do whatever you want.
Do you want to take the chair?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would hope in the next six months of my tenure being on this council, I've always treated everyone with the utmost respect, although I feel I was respected in several areas, but that's neither here nor there. I would hope in the next six months that you all conduct yourself professional, and let's get the job done as it relates to the, your constituents and the residents of this great city. And of course, we all have disagreements, and we can disagree to agree, but please, it's not needed. Please, stop.
Councilman Torres, you made the motion from discussion from the other councilman. Do you want to take back your motion to send a letter, and does Councilman Emerson want to relinquish your second? Or do you want to go forward with it?
I'll handle it personally, I withdraw the motion.
Councilman Emerson.
I withdraw the second.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will handle it personally.
Any other noon and finished business? Any other noon and finished business? Noon and finished business is closed. Public discussion. We have a Chuck Earhart, thirty-six Brunswick Street. Topic eminent domain.
I have copies for all of you, I'm glad I'm ready to say and improve with the quotations. Chuck Earhart, thirty-six Brunswick Street. The residents of Marble, Hanover, and Brunswick Streets are feeling betrayed, confused, angry, and scared. NICD's agents are pressuring owners to sell their homes as soon as possible for the Westlake expansion. If NICD gets their piece of the federal transportation infrastructure legislation from last week, there is still one year before it even comes to a vote. Word has gone out nationally for constituents to contact their state representatives, telling them to put all the funds toward repair and replacement of existing structures only. No new projects. Locally, we have received two very vague deceiving letters. On the NICD letterhead, beam longest in NEF tell of an open house staking procedures, and possibly a relocation agent will explain the process. The so-called. The so-called "open house" was a high-pressure relocation effort bullying residents into selling quickly. The second letter from appraisers Turzo and Bologna is to observe your property as part of the appraisal process. Little did we know, this was the final appraisal before an offer. Minutes after the appraisal, a relo agent from Boomerang Ventures comes to my door wanting to start the process. I met with him later in the date to hear what he had to say. First, the offers will be out early July and within a month or two that we have to accept or counter the offer. He got pushy, saying no promises or guarantees from previous NICD executives will be honored. Promises made at the Kenwood Elementary Gymnasium meeting of February 16th, 2017 in front of a huge crowd and on video. I want my home moved as promised. The agent said, "We don't really do that." Then he started backpedaling and said it would be moved to the nearest vacant lot. I know where that lot is. No way. When he started telling me that only a certain amount of my personal property would be moved, I threw him out of my house. I spoke with Chris Beck, the newest project manager, about these and other issues. He said he would get back to me and that many people want to sell. Many people are frightened, elderly, or without advanced education or language skills. They will passively accept what they feel is their sealed fate. Mayor McDermott took my question on his live radio show a while back, explaining, "We don't need any extra security and NICD cannot take our homes without the federal funding secured." And I quote, "Hammond protects its residents," unquote. Well, we feel like we've been thrown to the wolves. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mayor, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll tell you what's going on right now, as far as I know. Okay? This, first off, this project is moving forward, not because Hammond's on the train or if Hammond was off the train, this project was moving forward, not because of any decision made locally, because of a decision made in Washington, D.C. by our congressman, Pete Wiskowski. Let's be honest. We decided, probably one of the last communities in northwest Indiana, decided the council and the mayor got together and decided to jump on the train, being selfish, quite frankly, because, A, it was going forward anyway, and B, if we put our $20 million in the mix over 30 years, we'll probably get 10 to 1 return on our money. We realized this train project is going to take homes. And we were clear about it during the debate in the council and now. And I also question why NICD is in the process of acquiring properties right now as well because I know that this project hasn't been green-flagged in Washington, D.C. at this moment. And they are acknowledged, to the gentleman from Brunswick. They are speaking with people and they are in the process of securing the footprint for the train station, for the line that goes through the city, for the maintenance facility that'll be located in our city, all the way down to our southern border going over into Munster, where they're doing the same thing in Munster and where they're doing the same thing in Dyer. I've expressed my concern to the congressman and to everybody that's in charge, the RDA, which we don't have a single person we vote for on the RDA. They're appointed by the governor. Express my concern to the RDA. Express my concern to NICD. We don't have a single person on NICD. They're all appointed by the governor. I've expressed my concern to them. I've expressed my concern to the congressman. And quite frankly, this is moving forward whether we are concerned or whether we're not concerned. And if I was in the process of getting my property acquired, I would be concerned as the gentleman that came up here. I want him to know that we expect it to be a fair process for our residents. In fact, the council and the mayor's office about a year ago passed an ordinance called "Hammond is Our Home," which allows for homeowners in Hammond that are getting their property acquired by eminent domain on a few different projects. This, obviously, the train expansion was one of them. A $5,000 bump above and beyond what they get from the federal government to relocate their homestead from Hammond to Hammond. I totally agree with the gentleman that came up here and said they're in the process of acquiring properties now and we don't even know if this train project's going to go forward. I assume, because our congressman has 32 years of seniority, I assume he realizes that they're buying properties right now. And if this thing falls apart, if it falls apart in D.C., it's nobody in this room's problem or fault. However, the gentleman and his home has been acquired in the meantime. I totally agree with the gentleman. I just... I think the best thing that we could do for him is making sure they're getting a fair deal. But this process is moving forward, not because Mayor Tom's on board, not because the Hammond City Council's on board. It's moving forward because our congressman's on board. And the congressman got the governor and the RDA and NICD, and they're all pushing. And they're all hiring people and they're buying properties. I agree, sir. I agree. It's concerning. Okay? But I think we had a tough decision. We knew that hundreds of residents would be affected by this and we made the decision to march forward along with them. And I think it's a good deal for Hammond. And I think we owe it to gentlemen like the person that just came up and spoke to watch and make sure our residents are being treated fairly. But it's definitely concerning because they're buying properties right now. I agree with everything he said. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor, a question. It says here, "NICD cannot take our homes without the federal funding secured." Do you know if funding has been secured?
Funding has not been secured for the train and NICD is in the process of acquiring properties.
They don't have it for the train. Do they have the funding to take the homes? Do you know that?
They must. They're in the process. They've hired a firm and they've had two community meetings. One of them was in Hammond and one of them was in Munster. And they're in the process of acquiring homes as we speak. They're in the process of evaluating homes as we speak. So, it makes you... Everybody I talked to from the state and RDA and NICD, they're like, "This thing's going forward. That's why we're buying properties." And I keep saying, "Well, why don't they just make it official? Say, 'This project's going forward.'" It's very concerning what the gentleman brought up. I totally agree with them. And I think we owe it to that gentleman and to all the other residents that are in the process of getting their home acquired right now. We've got to make sure they're getting a good deal. And if this thing falls apart and the federal funding falls apart and this gentleman's property was acquired by eminent domain, that's a damn travesty. That's a damn travesty.
Mr. President.
But I'm concerned also.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be to the gentleman or maybe the mayor can answer this question. Are they getting fair market value for the property?
Absolutely.
Chair would entertain a motion to go back to new and unfinished business. Go back to it. So, Chair would entertain a motion to go back to new and unfinished business?
I make the motion to go.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Emerson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Ayes, have aye. Now, we can talk about it.
Sure. Councilman, again, I'm sorry.
The question was just the fair market value for the property.
Yeah. The federal government's usually very fair when they acquire properties. All right? This isn't the first time properties have been acquired through eminent domain in Hammond. We did it through the... With the sound wall, we did it for the flood zone. We do it for a lot of reasons. And usually, the homeowner's very well taken care of, very well compensated. And in addition, Hammond threw an extra $5,000 in the mix, which can only help. We want to keep all the residents that are being displaced. I want to keep all the residents that are being displaced and you guys gave us the tool to try to keep them.
I know some people want to try and sell their house, older people, but nobody wants to buy it because they don't know what's going to happen.
Very good friend of mine and a very dear employee of the city of Hammond, she loves her home. She lives in the second. And her process... Her home is being acquired as we speak. She put something on Facebook and they've taken care of their home immaculately. And she puts something on Facebook, "This is our last summer in our backyard." It sucks to hear that because I know she loved her home. But we're banking on the fact that our $20 million investment over 30 years is going to yield 10 times that. And I think that's a good deal for Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Okay, I was told by Mr. Chris Beck. He's the new project manager of NICD that they're not going to probably approve this till next April of 2020.
It's pretty close to election time for federal candidates. So, I wouldn't doubt if it came out in April.
Like the mayor said, they feel comfortable it's going through, but...
It seems to me this thing's being dragged on for quite a while, the actual awarding of the funds. And it makes you wonder, why is it being dragged on so long? You know? I mean, we have a congressman with 19 terms under his belt. He's been in there longer than the Speaker of the House. Why can't you just say, "The project's moving forward," so we can look at this gentleman and say, "Sir, we're going to take care of you, but it's for the greater good?" Right now, he's saying, "You've taken my property and you don't even know if this project's going to be approved." That's... That's a damn good point he brought up.
Oh, yeah.
And I was concerned as soon as I heard that they're purchasing properties. I said, "What? You're purchasing properties? We're still being told? We don't know for sure if the project's going to go forward." And then you talk to the people and another, like, "Mayor, this project's going forward, Mayor." Of course, it's going forward. That's why we're buying properties. Well, then just come out and say it so we can look at our constituents and say, "Sir, this is for the greater good. I'm really sorry." But what are we going to say to them now? It's a joke. It's a joke. And I'm a supporter of this project, but the process that they're doing is a joke. They shouldn't be buying properties unless... Our congressman comes out and says, "Deal. We got it done." But it's backwards the way we're doing it now, acquiring properties first. For what? For what? We buy your property, the deal falls apart. Sorry, sir. Hope you stayed in Hammond. Right?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
So, we are involved based on what we passed for Chicago Avenue, I believe. At that time, it was Chicago Avenue. People that would get displaced for... If they relocated in Hammond for the $5,000. So, whether we have any say in whether the train's coming or not, we're involved.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I agree with that. So, if this gentleman's home is acquired by eminent domain, he gets a fair market value from the federal government. And if he stays in our city, the city of Hammond kicks in an extra $5,000 to help him stay here. Absolutely. Regardless if the train is approved or not, for what it's worth. I wouldn't want to pack up my house and move, though. I know nobody wants to do that.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? We'll go back to...
Motion to return to...
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by...
Second.
Councilman Spitali to go back to public expression. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Ayes, have aye. Now, we had a sign-in sheet, so I know some new information. Does anybody else want to talk under public expression about anything? I know we had a Realtor coming. Thank you. Your name, please.
Nathan Reader with the Reader Companies on Indianapolis Boulevard.
Nathan?
Yep. Live on Alcott Avenue in Hammond.
Nathan Reader. P-N-A-T-H-A-N. Reader, R-E-E-D-E-R.
I just wanted to come to bring to the council's attention, we had the Hammond Realtor Breakfast last Thursday and we had a lengthy discussion with the code enforcement department regarding a new policy that they've started to enforce regarding bedrooms in a finished basement. And I brought to the mayor's attention when he spoke at the end of the meeting that we've had 72 homes in a basement sold in the last 45 days and 38 of them have finished basements, which according to the code and ordinances that are being cited by the building department are illegal. And 16 of them have bedrooms in the basement that the city code enforcement has come in and if they find that the home has a bedroom in the basement, they're requiring the homeowner to demolish the bedroom walls, rip it out, and start anew with that finished space. According to the code, a bathroom's illegal. Any room is illegal. Any habitable space in a basement's illegal. But according to code enforcement, what they're focused on right now is just the bedrooms. But it's left Realtors and homebuyers in the city of Hammond in somewhat precarious situation where we don't know, you know, what to expect going forward. We could say just bedrooms now, but if we help somebody buy a home with a finished basement in general, it could ultimately have to be removed at some point. The home that this new homeowner in Hammond just bought is not the home that they expected. It puts the Realtor in a potential lawsuit situation, but also loss of a client or future clients. But that's not our main concern. Our main concern is what the concern of the citizen of Hammond would be, which I assume they wouldn't be very happy if, after they purchased the home, city code enforcement showed up and deemed their property uninhabitable and required them to appear in front of the Board of Works to remove walls in their basement, the home that they just purchased. There's also 14 homes right now under contract and these are all homes listed between $100,000 and $200,000. So, it's owner-occupied property, in my opinion. These are not rental properties that are being sold and leased out for a profit with people living in a basement. These are rooms that could be used for just about anything. But if they meet the terms of the building department as far as it being a bedroom in the basement, they're going to have to appear in front of the Board of Works and the Board of Works could decide that they need to demolish that basement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know at the Realtors' Breakfast, the mayor took questions and so forth and they're having code enforcement looking at it.
Point of order. But for future reference so that you're not being called out, all you have to do is relinquish the seat and allow the vice president to sit.
Any other new... Oh, one more guy for public expression. Mr. Stoy.
I could add to that if you want.
Pardon me?
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I wish you would explain that seeing how a lot of the council and you gave a very good explanation.
Thanks. Mr. Reader just came up and...
And the one thing that you did mention is, when you first took office, that because somebody was living in a basement and they had a fire and couldn't get out and three people died. Now, that's what we're up against and as far as being sued and so forth.
It was two blocks from City Hall, Councilman Markovich. I was in my first year as mayor. Entire family perished in a cut-up basement, basically. I know Councilman Higgs remembers it. It was after we both got elected. I went over to the scene. It was still smoldering. And the only escape for the family that lived in that basement was a stairwell that burned away. So, once the stairwell burned away, they were trapped. There was the thick window down there. They had no chance. And I swore on that day that we were going to do everything we could to rid ourselves of that problem. And our code enforcement inspection department's aggressive, especially when it comes to issues like that. And sometimes they're a little too aggressive and sometimes we have to rein them back a little bit. And Gniar, who is good neighbors for Hammond, they've always been with us trying to sell our city. And I think it's important for us to be on the same page with Gniar, express concern to us through Councilman Spitali, who's also a part of Gniar and a Realtor. And I think that... I know that we're putting together a task force with representatives from Gniar and Councilman Spitali and representatives from the city of Hammond. And we're going to try to come up with some type of language to address Mr. Reader's concern because I think it's a legitimate one. It's about an old ordinance that we... That's the controlling law and it was made in 1964. And it defines basements as sellers. And if it's a seller, you can't have certain types of things in the cellar and we need to work out these issues. But I predict within a few months, the Hammond council will have before them an ordinance that deals with this issue because we want to work with Gniar. I want to give them all the tools we can so that they can better sell our homes. So, thank you for coming up.
George Stoy, Robertsdale. Yeah, that's a weird situation I just heard. Somebody didn't do their due diligence and researched the ordinance as a famine. I don't know if it's up to the architect, the general contractor, whoever built that house, or the Realtor. that house, or the Realtor. So, somebody didn't look up what the law was, and now they're coming here. Why don't they just come out and ask, "Hey, will you amend that, that, uh, part of the municipal code?" Because, uh, you know, all this bewailing, "Oh, I sold him this and I sold him that." Do your work.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting.
Mr. President, when you asked earlier, she raised her hand that she wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you. Your name and address, please?
Beverly Valente.
Please spell that, Bev.
V-A-L-E-N-T-E.
I'm sorry, what?
Valente.
V-A-L.
I'm a nineteen-year North Hammond homeowner, taxpayer, voter, and I know there is a survey going out regarding, uh, the Hundred Thirty-Sixth Street or Boy Scout Road, but just a couple things I wanted to point out regarding this, that, um, first of all, this street has been on a geological survey since nineteen thirty-two as Hundred Thirty-Sixth Street. So, for eighty-seven years, that road has existed. It is also considered a artery of commerce. It's an interstate artery that carries commerce back and forth, which is governed by Congress. And there's a good chance that there should be some kind of funds available if we do enough digging around to rebuild that road. Um, it was redone about, what, ten, eleven years ago, I believe, and it lasted quite a while, but last winter's, uh, torrential rains and snow and ice really did major damage to it. But it did last quite a long time. It is a heavily-used road. And my question is, by what federal authority did we shut down a, our artery of commerce, which that road is considered? It carries commerce back and forth from one state to another. And as you can see on the geological survey, it's been there since, for eighty-seven years. So, my only request is, please, Mr. Mayor, before you consider just shutting it down, um, look into the possibility of getting federal funding, because that road being shut down, I mean, I know for myself for a fact, trying to get to work, that corner of Goslin and Holman is so congested now because of all the traffic being moved over. And it, it's heavily trafficked. People coming from Illinois, coming to the, um, coming to the Festival of the Lakes, during the Festival of the Lakes, there's non-stop traffic coming in from Illinois. That's going to hurt a lot. When people find out, okay, now how do we get to the Festival of the Lakes? We turn around. Same thing with Pierogi Fest and all the other events that we have going on in that North Hammond area. We're going to lose a lot of Illinois business now, and it's not just the people from Illinois. It's Hammond residents, it's Hammond businesses, myself included, people that need that road to get back and forth, to do whatever, to go to work or, or whatever. So, being that it is, um, an artery of commerce, please look into, you know, getting some federal funding before we consider just shutting it down.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Mr. Chair?
Anybody else wish to speak under public expression? Mayor, thank you.
Uh, I highly doubt there's federal funding available for this small semi-residential strip, okay? Um, Boy Scout Road is heavily used, I agree. It's been a lot more heavily used since the Klein Avenue Bridge shut down, because the traffic that used to go on the Klein Avenue Bridge still has to get to Chicago, and a lot of times they want to do it without paying tolls, and they use that, Boy Scout Road. A lot of eighteen-wheelers on Boy Scout Road. We did a measurement off the LPR camera from a couple weeks ago, and there were six to ten thousand cars per day using Boy Scout Road. As a comparison, my street, I think my street's pretty busy, it's in front of a park, I get probably five hundred cars per day. Boy Scout Road's bringing in seven to ten thousand cars per day. Now, North Hammond itself has about six thousand cars per day driving around North Hammond, like in front of Councilman Mark's house on Hundred Forty-first. So, North Hammond itself will have about six thousand cars per day operating there, and Boy Scout Road more than doubles that. Some people think that's a good thing. Some people think it's a bad thing. But I could tell you one thing about Boy Scout Road, it was never intended to be a shortcut. It's a neighborhood. There's a couple businesses there, but there's a heck of a lot more homes there. And I tell you, I've done this a few times in different parts of the city, and sometimes it worked, and sometimes it blows up, and we're going to find out what happens with this one, because I'm sending out a survey, it's going to go out early next, like, no, actually, it's going to go out this week, and we want to have it back by the end of the month. So, it will be shut down the rest of the month. And once I read the survey, and the survey is North Hammond residents, and I think that's a very good group to choose from, because there, the residents are inconvenienced by all of our shortcut. If I'm a Hammond resident and I want to get to Hegewish, I'm going through their neighborhood to get there, and I'm driving fast, because I want to get there quick. And if I'm coming from Hegewish and I want to go to Cayman Avenue, I'm driving through Kowinski's neighborhood, and I don't care how fast I'm going, because I just want to get to Cayman Avenue. It's a shortcut. People, thousands and thousands of people are using it. I totally agree with the lady. But that doesn't mean it's right. It was never intended to be the replacement for Klein Avenue Bridge. It was being overutilized by semis, by cars, litter, bad guys. When our bank got robbed over there in North Hammond, guess how they left our city? They took Boy Scout Road and they torched their car right on Boy Scout Road. So, we put up LPR cameras. I'm a brave person, and I don't care what people say about me. If I think it's the right thing to do for the neighborhood, I'm going to do it. That's what mayors do. I want to remind you, when I built a curb from Sixty-Fifth all the way down to the river, I got called a racist, I got sued in federal court, I got ridiculed for months. Now go to that neighborhood and ask people how they feel about that curb. You ask them. Since that curb went up, traffic has dropped by ninety percent, crime stats have followed it. Where you have traffic, you have crimes. When you take away traffic, you watch what the crime stats do. We go until the end of the month with the survey, and then we'll see where the North Hammond residents are. And if they don't feel strongly that I made the right move, I'll open it back up right after we fix it up.
Mayor, question that was being asked out there, is the survey being sent to people that vote or to property owners?
Voters. Voters.
Not property owners, then?
No, sir.
Okay.
Good, so, and I'll tell you the boundaries right now. State line to the west, Goslin to the south, Cayman to the east, Boy Scout Road to the north. Literally North Hammond. Why?